But that's what the fire department wants. So if anybody's got, if you've got on the agenda, if you've got an agenda, we'll try to... If you're just here, just for the sake of just being here, you need to kind of exit just outside of the doorway here for the time being, until those who have the business to take care of gets done. And like I said, once you get your business completed, just kind of depart because, like I say, we really need to stay within the requirements of this. So I don't know, what are we down to now? We've got one left, we've got, we've got to have, what, two more to leave?
Thirteen.
Four, six, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen.
Just once people get done their part, they'll have to leave.
I know, but we still have the problem here.
Count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. All right, twelve.
You got twelve?
Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve. Well, when Kerry comes back in, we'll be at thirteen.
Well, all right, I'm just not trying to be miserable or nothing, but I just, I just got to try, we got to try to stay within, we have to stay, try to stay within.
Well, and a couple of folks could sit in the corridor if they wanted to, right by the, be in earshot at least.
Yeah, so, so like I say, I encourage them, once you get your business taken care of, after you're done, you know, just, just with the, for the people that anticipate having their business done, when they're done, just, you know, if you could leave quietly and after it's done, then we can continue on with the meetings. Sorry about that, a little bit of a change up, but anyways, we just need to be careful of that. Either that or we start having it in the gym.
Yeah, I think I'd recommend maybe the next, next meeting, you think about having it in the gym.
So, because it seems like we're getting, getting some crowds coming in. Anyways, with that being said, meetings, follow the order, and review approved minutes of October 21st, 2021.
I'll move to accept the minutes of the October 21st meeting.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I had a couple of things at the top of page two. I think it should say that Zach made a motion to adjust the drainage plans.
Yes.
That was a motion, and then it was seconded, and then it passed. And then, at the bottom of page three, where it's NEK C U D, I retyped. Wait. If they're going to stay out there, they've got to be quiet.
Shut the door.
Yeah.
I'll get them.
Um, I retyped that, it should be sent from, I gave everybody a copy, it should be sent from my public service authority. It's not NEK C U D. And Wade made a, had gone to the Zoom meeting the night before, and that explains what the meeting was about. So that should replace the, the part that's NEK C U D. Please.
I'm just having to save under that part, that's why I did it.
Okay, oh, all right, okay.
He set it under.
Yeah, okay.
So, Dan, you've got a copy of it?
Yeah, I see it, yeah, yeah.
So it's somewhere, yeah. You've got a copy.
I got it.
So we make sure that gets included into the, that way everybody, everybody understands what the, what we're going to be facing, what part of the, as the fire department's concerns are with capital water. And with the capital, the neutrality system, so. Here and done? Call a vote. All those in favor of the minutes as being printed with corrections, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right. This is passed. Adjustment to the agenda. I know because of the pushing the crowd out here a little bit, I don't know who's got coming up first, second, third, but I think we got everybody that's coming up next here for the moment.
Looks like it, yeah.
So anything you want to do with adjustment on the agenda, gentlemen?
I'm finding the agenda has printed.
I concur.
All right. Updates. Page two, opera.
I'll give a quick update. We are planning a, I'm going to plan a meeting on November 11th as a public informational meeting. It will be, specifically, it will be for information and answer questions only. It's not going to be used to, to
Make any decisions.
Make any decisions or to process any business of the town. It's only for information about the, the project itself. And the basic agenda will be to review the, the plans that have been prepared by Nate and give people information about, you know, what, what the plans entail. And then also to talk about what the, what the initial thoughts are on, you know, where the, the funding of this is going to be, so people understand what that looks like. From that perspective, I mean, that's what I really had for updates. There was something else that I was going to say about it.
Time, time and place, where are you?
Yeah, time and place would be six o'clock in here, at the gym, in the gym.
Are you making up signs? Are you making up signs or anything, or have we just put it on the board?
Yeah, we'll put it on the board. I can make up a flyer or something, just so people.
Facebook, maybe, I don't know.
We could probably.
Is it being used that night? Is the gym being used that night for anything else?
It's Thursday?
It should be a Thursday night, I don't think so.
No, Monday, Wednesday's Taekwondo, so, be fine.
Okay.
I think we could probably, we could probably post it, post it out to them. I mean, we usually do a meeting.
Yeah, I'll put a flyer together, I'll post it in all the regular places, and that way we can just get it out to everybody.
Okay, so you're going to post it then?
What's that?
You said you were going to post it.
Yeah, I can do, I can do all that.
All right.
If you need help with the post office and the entrance ready, just email to me.
Okay, yep. I don't know, what else, what else is there?
It says moving. Lots of the move, and the test holes have been dug.
Yep, and I think the, well, you were there, obviously. The, I think from the test holes, there's, there was two feet to ledge underneath the there.
So I had a question about the information meeting.
Okay.
Originally, you were going to have a meeting specifically with the fire department? Is that going to happen, or?
I can, I talked to Wade, I think Wade, if you want me to have one specifically with the fire department at this point, and we had talked about the meeting on Tuesday, but we suggested the overall meeting on the 11th and have that open to everybody. But happy to do a separate one for the, for the fire department, I just haven't had the time to get it scheduled.
I think the fire department has some, some concerns, and they're one of the main users of this parking lot, 24/7, 365. It's a volunteer group, we're in here night and day. I just think they have concerns and would like to be, would like to have a chance to talk with you about the plans, and I know the opening's a concern, so I just, I would like to see that happen, since they, they are, they are ones that use the parking lot more than people that come once a year to pay their taxes and once a year to go to chicken pie supper. They're in and out all the time. I know there's concerns about the end of the road, and it's been measured for one fire truck to get out, and that's fine, but in the course of the one fire truck trying to get out, you've got five or six cars that are trying also to get in at the same time. And then there are concerns with, at the end of the call, getting the truck back in, with the parking lot being, the entrance being made smaller. So I think those are some of the concerns.
Anything else?
I don't know, did anybody, I know we've got some folks in the hall, were they here to talk about this plan specifically, or did they have other business?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. We were expecting you were going to bring your motion back up, and felt this part of the solid Ivan, stuff like that, I'm finding that.
And it's the motion for, now, remind me, because I-
To create a wall off of this meeting?
Yep, yeah.
Park it down?
Yep, sure, yeah.
Well, yeah. Wade, you're going to make an early transition here or something?
It's just about noon. You hear what he said?
Yep.
Wade, Wade needs a count, so we know how to run out.
More people.
Keep getting more people. All right, what we got?
We have more coming, but.
Okay.
Wade, you want to table it at twelve?
Uh, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve.
We're at twelve.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to go ahead and.
So the motion that was tabled, well, the request for a motion was tabled at the last meeting, just because of Aaron's absence, but I think the, I'll make the motion to support the community club moving forward with completing a plan for the potential addition of a kitchen onto the community building.
I have a point of order, it's not on the agenda.
You're still debating on that?
Not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
It's about this overall project right here, I can't imagine it's not, but that's what we anticipated.
It's an info meeting.
And that was all discussed at the last meeting.
That was discussed during the informational part of the meeting. It was never put on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, we had a motion for it in the last meeting, and we couldn't be putting in this motion because it's during the informational part of the meeting. We wanted to have this discussion. We had a motion on the, on the table, and we asked that it be okay to wait, because Wade wanted Aaron here too, which certainly makes sense. And so we had, we had, we had the agenda.
You can't have a motion there.
No, was it in the minutes?
It seems like it fits very clearly, we're here.
So, yeah.
It was called down, I think we should be pretty open to.
I would, I would have to say that because there was a motion previously on the, on the, adjusting the plan for the drainage project utilizing these funds, that, you know, that, that is part of the discussion of the plan, is if we're actually going to adjust the plan to make space for, you know, the potential for an addition onto the rear of the building. You know, not specifically that it would be for a kitchen, but that there was the potential for that, that I think that that still means that the motion can be moved forward.
You can't have a motion to open the driveway. In other businesses, you have to be on the agenda to have a motion.
That would be extremely strange to make. The motion was made last, last meeting.
It's not in a minute.
Well, Peter, I'll, I'll say that at the last meeting, we didn't make the actual, we didn't have a motion because
No, there wasn't.
Because, you know, with Wade and I and Aaron not being here, we didn't want to have, you know, we didn't want to have the discussion or vote on a motion without Aaron being present. So what we, what we did say was that we would discuss it as part of this plan at the next meeting, I believe.
The duty of that chamber is to talk the motion being made, and then discussion about whether it's seconded or not. And if it's not, it's a minute's, shame on your secretary.
You decided not to have a motion?
Well, for one thing, Peter, it's, it was brought up and open to the public and in our business, and we can't, we can't vote on anything on that, when that's in place, on that part of the agenda. So I don't know how that got to that point.
We went immediately, and we needed to have a discussion, and we had.
But I don't recall any motion being made.
No, there wasn't.
No, you're trying to, you're trying to beat around the bush to try to get you what you want out of it. The first thing is, is for one thing, is the reason why we wanted to have Aaron on board here is so we could have the discussion. If we had, if we had made a motion, bringing Aaron on board wouldn't have made any difference.
So I, I have, I have two points of order. First off, if you look at the minutes that were just approved this evening, at the beginning of the meeting, that we had tabled the discussion based off of the request by Peter for a motion, and that, you know, Wade asked for this to be part of the select board meeting at the next meeting, when Aaron was in attendance. Secondly, as part of the setting of the agenda, what is on here that is missing from today's agenda is the community club resolution, which was laid out on the agenda. And again, was part of the minutes for, that we approved tonight. So I, I would go back to, I think, you know, one, that this, the discussion around the kitchen specifically, or the planning of a kitchen, that it does, I think, fall within the purview of the agenda item, which is the phase two of our, our project, in which we did, you know, we did approve a motion to adjust the plan to create space for the kitchen partly. So that's where I think that, you know, at this point, the motion should move forward as it's written, or as, as I, as I stated it earlier, for, for discussion by the select board.
All right, well, so be it as it is. I want to be able to amend that motion, and to say that, Peter, you've got to have a letter of intent.
What was the motion?
Whatever he had made, I'm just amending, amending the motion, whatever he had made, that we have a letter of intent of what your purpose is and plan.
Just a point of order.
Of what?
Just a motion.
The motion was for the select board to decide if we want to support the community club moving forward with planning of a kitchen as, as the addition to the community club, or to the community building.
Is there going to be a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Well, what are you planning on doing with the resolution, Peter?
I'm going to create a, do research, do a study, and come back with perhaps a proposal for your review and approval for teaching comments.
And you don't feel like you can do that without a resolution? You've come before this board before, and we've supported you for the, doing the kitchen.
Yeah, the, I don't know what Dan has in his minutes, but it's a fair question, Aaron. So specifically what we're talking about here, and your partner there was pretty annoyed about explaining it, was that we're working with community property, and so, so the funding, we don't want to ask the taxpayers for tax increases or any of the stuff to do, so we want to demonstrate that the owner of the property is okay with us creating this plan, not committing a darn thing, it's just, just creating a plan, save us that entire, there's no risk, no loss, no cost, and we are all right. You have all of it, and we're all to comment on it, to your actual life when we get done.
So, Peter, I would say that, you know, what Wade suggested earlier, that I think, you know, a plan should include a letter of intent. I think it should be, you know, a comprehensive plan of what the, you know, what, what the kitchen plan entails. You know, I know that there's been previous drawings done by Black River Architecture about, you know, the kitchen, and I think that plan needs to be very specific to what it, what it's going to include, and make sure that, you know, anything that's, that's planned or constructed, you know, obviously would need to be supported by the select board and the town of Groton, but also needs to make, we need to make sure that it includes and is up to, you know, all of the correct building codes. And so I would actually recommend that, you know, Danny Webster be a part of that planning process, so that we make sure that we're meeting all of the correct zoning requirements.
Don't make any more. So we had a deal, more than fair.
The resolution is just to support them planning it, looking for a plan. So as Peter stated, I don't believe that the town and the select board is committed to the project, just.
I would like something for Lydia, that this is in no way endorsing. It's a resolution for, for, for some endorsement, for the select board speaking for the town to exercise.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So we'll package it under the part of the letter of intent, we would like to meet the interface to make sure that's monoplyty, fair.
I guess that's me, because I've pushed, put forward the motion. And again, I want to, you know, again, I think it's, needs to be made, made clear that it's a plan with, with, you know, an intent for what the plan will include, and that, in, you know, as I think Wade and Aaron both agree, is not a specific commitment to allow construction to start on a project. However, I think the next step, you know, if, if this motion carries, is that, that when the plan is, is ready to be presented, it's brought back to the select board to, for us to look at, understand, and, and help guide the project if, if we decide to move forward with it, or what the next steps need to be.
More than fair. That's all we could ask for, and I appreciate it.
Okay, any other discussion? Philip, did you have a question?
I did. And I'll present it to the board, and it, it'll bounce back to Peter, but I just doesn't, I don't know how to talk to Peter about it, I don't know how that works, I've talked to the board. So Peter just said, he stated that the letter of intent, and it wants to be right, and he wants the board to make it right. And I think, I think that the community club, its members here, have the ability to make sure that's right before they bring it to the board. The letter of intent, I don't think, we need to critique their letter of intent.
You want me to respond, there's one less on the table, quick.
If you've got a, you can respond.
I think it's, you know, we're a small town, and we want to reach out, and so we want to reach out to the board and give them a chance to critique when we make motion moves forward. So I think it's just a natural thing to do. We're not going to do this in a vacuum. We already have some, we will find people who want to kill you, that are helping us, and have the right skills, and we want to encourage more of that.
I would just encourage it to this, that, you know, to have your members on that, on that committee, or the club, whatever, community club, whatever, whatever it's called, to make sure that, you know, everything is the way it is. All the i's dotted, t's crossed, you know.
Sure.
Because, you know, basically, all we hear, to review it, thumbs up or down.
Yeah, absolutely, couldn't be any more. We want this to be a win for everyone, for everyone. Thank you.
So my other, my comment, and it's just a comment, is, so this letter of intent will also include how the, how the community club as a, as an organization plans on funding this on the present.
A lot of things we're thinking are going to the fire department, non-profit, national.
Yeah, I, I would have to say that any, any plan that comes, you know, beyond, beyond a building plan with, with, you know, a detailed building plan is, you know, where, where is this going to be sourced from? And I think, I, I think one of the concerns that definitely needs to be addressed as well, and I'll be open about this, is, you know, when we, when we build this and we need to build it to code, if it, if it does move forward, what are the code impacts on the rest of the building? What does that mean?
The other thing is the struggle.
Which, again, I think is part of, as we, as we start to look at a plan down the road, is, is it feasible? And what that means.
The other thing is the continuing cost of heavy. As you said, you've got to have a suppression system, given the few days they want to stay. You've got to have a suppression system tested every six months. Who pays for that? Every six months.
That's, again, I think those are all things that need to be, you know, addressed as part of this, as part of this proposal.
I think, just so we can close it, is, that's part of the whole letter of intent, how all, all these, that's something we've, rather as a board, we're going to have to look at, to make sure that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and make sure that, that, everything's accompanied with that. So that's, that's, all that information has to be on that letter, that's the whole point of that letter of intent.
Absolutely.
You know, where the funds are coming from, and how you propose to, you know, how this proposal to get there, and be taken care of.
Wade, just one, one final thought, too, is, I want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, we're going to adjust the, you know, phase two of the drainage plan to incorporate space necessary for a kitchen, but that's not going to hold up that plan. So the kitchen is, is its own separate project that the community club has decided to take on, but it is not, you know, I want to make it clear that we need to not allow that to impact the
The drainage.
The drainage, especially the drainage portion of the plan.
In fact, we have followed you, you want to work with you on that stage, please?
I have one little, I have another comment, it's a question coming. What is a tax payment kind of draw, if you don't go on? What happens to that?
Want to answer?
You have an answer for it?
You can say no, you're fine.
Oh, we just got to, just make a quick one, because we've got, we've got a big agenda going here, so I just don't want.
It's back with the questions at this stage, as all right, you know, let us create a plan, true diligence, and then we have questions and answers, and we'll, we'll perform a poll. I have one last thing. This letter of intent, we need to be able to see the entire funding source for the entire project.
Well, that's the whole point.
Because we don't want to get halfway through it, and we're going to launch.
The whole purpose of a letter of intent, to make sure.
I've seen other things go halfway through. Thanks, great, I'll end it, Paul.
All right. We're going to close it, so, we've done, we, like I said, there'd be more discussion down the road. Is that anything else?
Nope, I think Peter is looking for a motion to support planning. I mean, I think that's, that's how I, I see the situation.
Okay. We'll call a vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign? Okay.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
No problem.
Now the board begins.
All right, thank you, Peter.
Okay, I'm going to bring three more back in. How many?
Three more.
Four people.
Four, yeah.
One, two, three, three.
All right, go on, fill the house. Start filling the house.
All right, so, so is room one more?
Done. Yep. I think so. Two, four, six.
No, not too many.
Thirteen, huh? Well, that's thirteen.
Okay.
Miscounting. I keep forgetting about the cameraman.
All right. Okay, that's done. Anything else on that before we move on?
No, I think we, well, I think we covered it.
They covered the first item, I mean.
I, I just.
So, yeah, so just as a, okay, just as a follow-up to that, I will schedule, I'll work with Wade to schedule a specific meeting with the fire department to discuss concerns about the project, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, how about Wade?
So, a quick thing, I got the letter the other day, the email.
I got the letter the other day, the email that we got the grant from Lower. Contacted ESPN Airfield. Of course, they don't have any, because everybody else did their letters before we did. He's got a couple on the way, but in order to put down the name of it, he'd like a signature on his sales quote. Just so the sales, the office is happy. But I'm wondering if Wade would just put a signature on it, tell him the email, tell him the one. He's got the email, he'll read it and say, oh.
What's the name of that company?
H D Fairfield.
Go. Do you want to add this one?
Yeah. So, smoke and cup, work up in the speed. So hopefully next week we'll have it.
Okay.
About it.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
Okay, so my first question is for Aaron, do you have a chance to look at the cemetery?
Yes, I did, yep. And I talked to a couple of guys, and actually reached out to Chris and talked to him. And what, the general consensus was, was to go from a five-year contract with three.
Oh.
That Chris is more comfortable with that. Anytime you're dealing with small engines, gasoline's a big part of your budget. So, I mean, in years past, I've talked with Jim Widget, and he started the year at $235 a gallon and ended up $485 a gallon. It's, so, that was the only, other than that was.
Okay, just adjust that, and I can put it in the paper if you want.
Yep.
And then any details of the job? I think I had it attached.
No, I think it was, yeah.
That was still okay, the details of that?
Yeah, I think so, thank you.
And then the dates, just when you want it to come to you guys?
Okay.
So I printed the agenda that I'll post for the budget committees. And I'll post it, so definitely don't have to worry about it. And.
I have an extra one you posted me.
Sure.
What's the watch?
You're bringing.
I have a leftover cake.
So wait, I can call Sarkis and see if they're gonna be around that day and.
Sure.
What order to know, so. So this is the, tomorrow's the last day of collecting taxes, been a long week, but taxes are coming in good.
Then it's Kerry's job after that, right?
Right, then it's Kerry's job.
Just a reminder on the budget thing, you realize, just a reminder, we'll be running late.
Right, that's why it's adjusted the way it is. So fires not until 9:30. And even if you're not here, we could try to rearrange it.
I'll give, well, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I'll give my, copy my things to the board anyway, so she'll have it.
And I was looking at dates for the last time, last date for purchasing items. We usually try to cut back three or four weeks before the end of the year to try to get things paid in 2021. So I was looking at December 10th. It's a Friday, it's two weeks in, so I thought that could be the last day for POs to stop coming in. And wonder what your thoughts were on the Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and MVP Insurance.
I had questions. First question is, did, before this was given to the board, was Philip ever contacted, been met with, to discuss the insurance issues prior to this coming to the board?
No, I gave it to you, please.
Okay, I just, I'm just saying, it probably should have gone, you know, had Philip had the opportunity to meet, to discuss, you know, what his thoughts were, concerns was with the current insurance situation, what he felt, what he felt, would he want to keep the same, would change? I mean, I don't know, at this point.
It is the Select Board's decision, I gave it to you to decide.
I have a question. Since when do employees dictate to the company what insurance they have?
I'm just, I'm just saying, I just want to know how, how well they think, I mean, I mean, we go.
It's up to you, with your fiduciary responsibility, to the taxpayers of this town, to make that decision. It's not up to the employees.
Well, that's, that's true, but, I mean, I'm concerned about the individual and I don't want to know what his feelings are about the insurance. I mean, is that any harm in knowing what they?
It is if it affects the fiduciary outcome. Last year cost a tremendous amount of money. It could have been saved.
Agreed.
That's not fair to the other people in this town. It's not legal.
Well, I'll state something in open debate right now. I'll just read, from what it, what it'll cost. Falls right off in here, here, little thing that Blue Cross and Blue Shield put out.
So that was sent to you in the mail, right?
Blue Cross, Blue Shield sent it to you.
Right, so if he had the information, like I got the information.
So, so now I really want the board to realize that Lisa's job is a serious job in this town. This town tragickers, and even the people who've done the job in charge are a tremendous job. And she gives that paperwork, but she deals with the company. Does her, pays it, whatever, just gives it to her. She brings the paper, who brings it to you? So right now I feel that her job, now falls back, since she's brought it to you, just like any other taxpayer in town. She's not a town official now, she doesn't take the insurance. And, and to address Danny, we've always been, brought this to us. We put this stuff over, we sat down, we just came up with what we were gonna pay for. I don't know what you know that. We just presented it back to the board. Ultimately, board makes the decision. But what I, what I looked at, the figures, if they ran them, we ran the figures today. Cost seven, because I'm, I'm not on the same policy, not on the same policy, not on the same plan. I'm on a two-person plan, and the two other people are on family. So the difference between those plans without, without doing add and subtracting somewhere in the air was lost, because I just knew that. Is somewhere, I cost the town $3,000 less a month than the two other people on this plan. So I'm here to negotiate if I can, you know, something in here that's, that helps my family stay above the home. You know? Not trying to push anything down anybody's throat, but that's, this is what it is. I just, I have a feeling that, that the way this is presented, that I wasn't given the, the other perks or whatever, the other policies, looked at it before. Didn't like it then, I don't like it now, because I haven't seen it. And I don't want to get real deep into it, I can't, I don't want, unless I get, look my fur, then I'll, then I'll have to do it. And I'm not, I'm not trying to bully my labor, I just want, you know, I can ask for benefits, like asking for earnings.
I've run multimillion dollar companies, I've worked multimillion dollar companies, and I have never, ever had an employee came to negotiate their insurance with the company. It's up to the company, the fiduciary responsibility, to take care of that. If that was done in the past, shame on, shame on the Select Board, thousands of people.
When the board is actually making decisions and fast, that's just how it's happened. And if like, my input or Karen's input, Aaron's input, or Lisa's input affected that decision, that's how that operates. You really just want to.
So I, I will say that, working for a very large company, going through this, because I'm, I've taken another job and I'm looking at insurance premiums and everything, I think one of the things that we need to keep into consideration is what's, not just what's in the best interest of the company, from a, from a financial perspective. As much as that's important, I think it's also important that we're doing the right thing for the employees that take these benefits, and.
If you have two similar planes.
Well, that's, that's.
One costs less than the other. That's a pretty simple question. If they're similar planes, if they're equivalent. You have any other just again, right? I see one.
If you're the.
Well, we got, let me kind of, I'll run down, I got the, I kind of, my wife kind of ran down both with the list from the Blue Cross, Blue Shield and the MVP. So I'll read, I'll read the Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and I'll, I'll read the MVP. Okay, Blue Cross, Blue Shield Platinum, deductible is $400 per person, $800 to slash family. Out-of-pocket, maximum is $1,400. Prevented care is zero. Copay is $15 slash $40, 15 to 40. Urgent care is $50. Prescription, it goes 10, $10, $50, or 50%. Out-of-pocket maximum pharmacy is $1,400 per person. Double, and then it goes double for two-person or plan or family plan.
So $2,800 out-of-pocket maximum?
Yep. Yep. Emergency room, $100. The total package is 2,478.56.
Per year?
I think that's per month, yeah.
That's for months.
That's a monthly premium.
That's a month.
Monthly, okay.
That's, that's a family.
That's a family plan, yeah.
What about the two-person plan? And then the Blue Cross and.
Yeah, I have Blue Cross. Okay, the MVP, Platinum Plan, excuse me. Deductible is $400 per person, $800 two-person, two-person family. Out-of-pocket expense, $1,400 to $1,800. Prevented care is no, zero.
They didn't have.
They didn't have it, okay, that's, okay, I'm just checking the person who did it for me. They didn't have any, they had nothing for preventative care on there. Copay is 15 to 40. Urgent care is $50 to $100. Diabetic supplies is, you got minus.
50%.
50%, okay, sweet, 50%. Chiropractor is $20, acupuncture's not covered. Prescriptions, $10, $10 to $50. Hospital facilities, 10%. Prescription out-of-pocket maximum, $1,400 to $2,800. Kids dental and vision for up to age 21. They didn't have a percentage on that? Nothing? Okay, it's just, okay, it's all it said on. I scanned through it, so a lot of this information, not just. MVP well-being rewards up to $600 per contract.
That money you can save. That money you can save. I don't.
All right.
I think it's like a point system, I think you get that money back.
Total family cost per month is $2,277.62.
And two-person plan?
16, 21.
Oh, wait.
For Dan's information, I have had the opportunity to go around and ask anybody who said MVP this year. People I talked to last year said the same thing. They want, little Chris, that's what, that's the health care they have. I said, what do you think about it? She says, I don't want to bill, so I have to bill them. And she won't give me the money. That, you know, not as great, terrible, it's not, she says, I have to bill them, it's a bummer. So it's a bummer for that. If anybody else just didn't have a, they didn't have a good, warm, fuzzy deal enough, MVP had that one. So I don't know if anyone.
Warm, fuzzy deal enough, you could, you could lead the right one stint last, if you're lucky.
Totally understand it, Danny, but I had a stint with them two and a half years ago. I didn't get stints, I got a bite to ask, and I can't, they, they paid that bill 100%, but did, they denied me stuff. They denied my, wasn't the surgery, the stress test, they denied the stress test. I got the denial in the mail the day I had my operation. And go ahead, deny that's their job to try to save money. They didn't, they didn't bother, they paid every penny, they just paid it. That's, you know, so I don't have, I don't have anything bad to say about. I do realize it's, it's, it's just. It's easier for me to just not change all this crap that I have to go through. Even change it, it's, it's very, on my part, it's a impressive plan. It's very minor, and, yeah. I don't want to get beaten. So that's, that's, you know, fix any money.
Exactly, it's the same song over there. Do some math.
You're talking about saving $4,000 if you have a new employee. Six to Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
I think I figured $6,500.
Yeah.
Well, that's because it's two people on team, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so with that, I'll look at the numbers again. If they went, if we stayed in Blue Cross right now, in their figures, I would cost 10, in my, my family, my two-person policy would be done. I would cost 10 less. It's $3,193.20 a month cheaper to have the young two-person policy than having the other two people on that.
But if the other two people on our MVP.
No, we're paying the premium. They pay 10%.
They could, they could opt, they could do that, because we're not, we're not bound to be. We're not bound to have the same policy. We worked for a while, we had to be on, you had to belong to whoever it was.
Well, it's up to the Select Board to set policy.
It is now, but it wasn't back then, if you, when you had to help the insurance, you, you had to, you had everybody, you had to mark them all. Now, they let them, that is absolutely. So we could have one of them policy.
Well, here's another deal you could do. If you wanted to stay in Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and the Select Board voted to go with MVP, you could pay the difference and keep your Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Is that correct? If you can choose.
We played these games, you know?
No, I'm just.
Yes, I mean, we played, we played these games.
I'm just asking for a question.
Sure, yeah, they can, they can do that. The board has told me you could do that, they could say, Philip, you don't, if you don't want to go, that's to pay the difference.
Yeah.
I don't, I think, I think what Danny's gonna do is, is eventually when we fill, speak this morning, I'll just soon not do that.
I'm just saying.
No?
What do you think, Zach?
That's, that's perspective, Dan, you know what I mean? I mean, this big business doesn't care about anything but the bottom dollar, they don't care about people, they don't care about families, they look at them as how much that employee costs the company versus what they give to the company. That's how a multimillion-dollar business looks at their employees.
And they're talking thousands or hundreds of employees, we're talking three employees, right?
Actually, no. Who's eligible for insurance? That's my question.
What?
Who, who, who in municipality is eligible?
Us four.
Just you four?
Let's try.
So currently, I, just other figures to throw at you, currently we pay $85,950 with Blue Cross, a year. And Blue Cross did go down this year, so it's going to be $80,660. MVP would be $74,115, less, that's what I figured, the $6,500 would be less. So, so Blue Cross did go down.
Well, I'll tell you, both of these plans, I wish my employers would offer plan days, holy sh, excuse me, holy crap.
Holy snakey.
I mean...
I think, I think religiously, Zach, and in your two bits, to, this town's always looked out for the employees, always, since way before, when Lekker Welch was on, he fought hard, he was miserable, fighting, you know, and was miserable. He fought for this town to get health insurance. You know, I don't, you know, way before me, not a lot, but you know, I was kind of a young man, I don't know how much they got back then, it was, you know, insurance was nothing, but he fought for this town to get it for employees and forward, as care got through, care first. We don't have, we don't have a bazillion people who get, we have, we have negotiators coming to Indiana negotiating for us, that's how that works. We're here negotiating for ourselves, I have to negotiate. They can say no, they can say no, they can say no.
To the taxpayers of this town, as well as the employees, and where does a sustainable savings can be made? Or the taxpayers who pay your insurance, who should be done. If they're, if it's similar plans, if it's not similar plans, I totally understand.
Lisa, what was the budget difference between the two?
Which one?
Or what were the two, what were the...
So Blue Cross is going to be $80,660.
Blue Cross?
Yep.
MVP was 74.
MVP is going to be $74,115 in either one. The difference is 65, 44.
And that's with...
The same Platinum.
Three, with three employees on the plan or, or four?
I did it, what is currently?
Which is three.
Okay, which is three. And, okay.
So we put $107,000 back in this year out of the highway, whatever it is, that made almost no effect on the tax rate. I mean, my taxes are within pennies of last year. What's $6,000 gonna do? I mean, really? The whole tax bill.
If you look at it that way, plus $80,000, nothing, right? So we might as well pay for all of it.
I mean, looking at the plans, I mean, they're identical, that's just compared, I mean, that's, and it's a difference of, you know, $6,000.
So, now you can't see my face, but if you want to see my eyes, you can do that. I don't have a polar face. And I don't want, I have a little finger.
Hi, uh... Yeah.
Yeah, that's an opinion that we back, that's the second part, where it's, look, what Danny's talking about, you know, we shouldn't have to negotiate, second part, let's be held, and that's what we're up to do. Negotiating our jobs.
I think, I think to Danny's point, we have a fiscal responsibility to do, to, to look at every dollar that we spend, whether it's for stove or grater, it doesn't matter, we gotta look at it all, right? So I think fiscally, we have to understand that, I think from an impact perspective, when we're looking at, you know, what, what we're looking at here, you know, in the grand scheme of things, is it really that much difference? Yeah, this year it's a little tighter, but I know last year when we looked at it, there was a pretty significant difference.
What about to go partway for everybody and do MVP and 0% out of the employee's pocket?
What is, and what's the math on that, Carrie?
Why not just leave it all? You know what? I'm at the point now where I can see everybody else who wants to negotiate, it's Mike's who's gonna negotiate.
Right, so you're talking 72,000.
So is it, any, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to keep everything straight. Is there anything on that MVP, I'm just asking a question, I'm just being stupid. Is there anything on that MVP that, something that kind of does, kind of bothers you a little bit, fires coverage?
The thing that bothers me about MVP is the penalty on it. Haven't looked at it, I don't know what it is.
So I, I think, I had, we, we did this last year, but we didn't have quite as much time as we have now, and my, my recommendation would be that we get the information for MVP to Philip and to Harold and to Carrie and to Lisa, because they're all eligible for insurance, and I think that at the beginning of the next select board meeting, we have an executive session to answer any questions that they have about the insurance, and that we have this on the agenda for us to make the final decision on it, because I think it's, it's, it is appropriate for us to hear and understand what, you know, Philip, Harold, Carrie and Lisa's concerns and questions are about, about the policies. Again, they're, they're very close and we're talking about, you know, $6,000, which...
Well, Kerry had a question, if you left the MVP, you could afford to pay 100% of the employee cost.
With no budgetary impact.
Well, it's less budgetary.
So, so now, now, I don't want to give the best math to Danny, but now we are, now he does say it's all right to negotiate, so that's where we're gonna go for you.
No, I didn't say it was, it was a negotiation. I, I already suggested to them that that's a way to go, as a board, they still have a fiduciary responsibility and they're covering.
I just, I guess my concern, Danny, is when it comes to the financial judiciary, isn't that incorporated, I guess maybe I'm old school, I guess, but isn't that incorporated also, not only just on the bottom line, but doesn't that incorporate the, the benefit of the individual in itself, or is that just, or am I stepping out of bounds on that?
When, when you have similar policies, and you have one that's substantially less than the other, there is a fiduciary responsibility by the board, you, the taxpayers, to look at that and make the correct judgment. Last year, in my estimation, that was an incorrect judgment, and it aggravated me for a whole year, so now here we are. And I just want to make sure the board takes a look at it, puts in all the options, and if the plans are similar, and there is a cost savings, we don't go down the same road we went down last year, because I don't want to be aggravated for a benefit.
I understand. So I would suggest that go on with Zach's recommendation, that, that it gets the homework done before the next board meeting, and, and we'll end up with the executive...
Executive session, okay.
What's the deadline for MVP?
Well, it's December 1st, I think, is what, because we were over that deadline last year for the decision.
Does that mean you better pay 10% of your hospital stay inpatient? It's not as good as Blue Cross.
When did you have it on?
It is there.
The enrollment began November 1st.
So that's not as good as Blue Cross.
I haven't been talking to a rep, I'm not wasting my time talking to a rep like I did last year, so I haven't talked to him, I just... Well, the next meeting is November 18th, so it's time.
You know, I can ask Lisa, it's, it's just, I don't know if it looks stupid, but a plan on taking insurance this year?
Yes, my husband's gonna retire, so I'm planning to take it.
So, okay.
So your figures are based on three, where are they?
Right.
Yeah, that goes up, so...
But the savings do not substantially less.
Everything just gets shifted, you know, I...
No, it's on MVP. It's over here. Yes, I did, right here, 10%.
It goes, it goes up to, with, with MVP at 100%, that doesn't take out the 10% premium, that puts it at $109,000 for, for, for four family plans. Now, from a budgetary perspective, we'll look at that, but that compared to where we are currently, um... So, what it comes down to is, like, for MVP, at 100%, it's, it's basically the same, it's there's like a less than $1,000 difference. If it, if we paid 100% of the pre, of everything as a town, it would be less than $1,000 more than if we stuck with Blue Cross Blue Shield and stuck with the 90-10 split.
So what would the cost savings be for the Blue Cross?
If we, it's, it would bring it down to 99, just over $99,000 for four, for four family plans.
Blue Cross Blue Shield is $2,478?
Which is, yeah, at 100%.
No, I'm just saying, it's $2,478 a month, right?
Yep.
That's roughly $10,000 a month, so that's $120,000 a year.
Yep, $118,970. But...
He's on the two-person, but for the sake of that, he's going with the family.
Yep.
You can't, I can't argue that, Danny, because now, now it works out, if it's 100% of, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, I, I, I pay, I pay, because I take a less of insurance, I don't cost the town $3,193.20, if, if we want to disprove it, it's not that, that's not the purpose, that's what they would be stating.
But that's like nitpicking anything in our budget, I don't get, I don't get uniforms, so I cost the town a couple thousand dollars less than you do on uniforms, so we can't nitpick every little line that...
But this is, this is a $3,000 difference, that's...
So is the uniforms.
So your, your plan about 7,640, and the family plan costs 24,700.
True, so I, I love, I love to end it, so there's two, two people on that family plan, so the cost, huh?
So I, I think, in, in the interest of time, I think that it is appropriate for us to make sure that everybody, that the four, that the four people in the town that are eligible for benefits have an opportunity to review both sets of paperwork, and I think that we, we, we plan an executive session at 6:00 PM on the 18th at our next meeting, right, is it the 18th? That we then, we have an executive session to allow those concerns to be expressed confidentially, and we then can make a decision as part of the agenda for the meeting to finalize the direction in which we go.
You want to mention what? What? That 10%.
We can make a statement.
Okay.
The statement is, I was not without a doubt gonna melt that on my vacation, I'll have to deal with that. Okay, so there's every year, something happens.
I don't feel bad, I'm on, I'm on vacation too.
I'm jobless that week.
Sorry.
I haven't had a vacation session. I know, just saying, just throwing it out there.
I've just decided to retire my vacation this year, it just happens to fall right there, so...
And it's following during my second surgery.
So anyways, we're, we're, we're gonna try, we're gonna get this, we'll get it done. So, anyway, we've got to move on.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
So, we'll be, we'll hopefully, we'll get our homework done, so, on that, so...
Anything else, Lisa, for...
Nope, just the orders to be signed.
I appreciate all the comments from everybody, it's helpful, it keeps us, you know, on our toes, as you should, so, anyways, same there. They already went over the budget meeting for that, okay, that's all, thanks. Excuse me, all right, next, town clerk.
I have a floor hockey request for the gym, and I wanted to get your approval for, I thought we had, you guys had talked about that, on the new floors being refinished, if you were gonna...
What was that again?
Floor hockey up in the gym.
Oh, floor hockey, yeah, okay.
Is that playing in socks? No, sneakers. I didn't know.
Well, I didn't either as well.
And it's what, well, I mean, puck or ball? Depending.
Plastic either way.
Yeah, you look.
Plastic puck, plastic stick.
We refinish the floor to use it, I mean, I don't, I don't...
I mean, they're not gonna scuff the floor anymore than the tables are, the chairs are.
I don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's fine.
I mean, it ain't no different than scuffing, you got gravel on the bottom of your shoes, scuffling across there, I mean, what's the difference?
I mean, the trick is, is just to keep up on the floor better than once every 40 years.
Yeah, this is, is not gonna be able to go through it much.
So we did have a call to have a roller skating group.
Okay.
Do you want roller skates?
Not unless that floor gets clear epoxy like the gym floor at the school does.
About 20 times.
Yeah, it needs to be about a half inch thick.
No for roller skate?
Yeah, they'll wear that floor down quicker than sneakers will.
And you set up on this like a roller derby?
Yeah, they all, they used to have, believe it or not, they used to be, they used to have a roller derby, there was a, down with, that's the childcare down at Warner's, Warner's Gallery, used to be, that used to be a rink for roller derby, back, they'll find one. Well, I remember my folks talking. I remember my folks talking about that, so...
I don't need that mental.
No, but like I say, that, that was, that was...
Okay, so now, the food shelf has done a basket sign-up for Thanksgiving baskets, so that's...
Let me know if you need help with delivering any of that stuff.
Oh, they pick up here at the ramp, thank you.
I know, but if somebody needs one, I'm off, I got nothing to do.
I got stuff in my house.
Trying to get other stuff to do, so I don't have to do the house.
The dog ordinance is past the petition deadline, so that still needs till November 16th to be official, that would be the 60 days, and then we're done. to be official. That would be the 60 days, and then we're done with that. I did a little webinar class on that website, the new website, and it was great. The guy was great. It seems easy enough, and he understands how, you know, with the budget that, because if we sign before December 31st, we get the cheaper rate, but he knows that, you know, there'd be no billing or, and nothing would start till the, till the next year, the next budget, so we can budget for it. So I'm gonna, I have the, I had last week, the same form, the stuff that Gary looked at and everything, so I guess just approval to go ahead and.
Is that accessible? Just, I mean, just for, is it like just a town clerk thing, or is that something Lisa and?
No, like Lisa, Lisa and I would, would learn it.
Yeah.
Because they'll, they offer all the training for it and everything, too. And if we, even if, so we are the ones putting it on, but they can also do it, too. So if something you're struggling with or whatever, they said they respond within three to four hours and, and get it done, so. So I wanted to get that before the end of the year, to get the cheaper rate. If that's something you want us to do, or?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
900, 700 a month?
70 a month.
What?
70.
900 a year, so $70 a month.
$70 a month, yeah. 700 a month.
Want to get Philip going? That number was stuck in my head.
I'd be happy to make a motion. What exactly am I, what is the?
To approve the town web.
I make a motion to approve the town.
New town website through Town Web.
New town website through Town Web.
Second. I looked at the, what town was it that?
Vernon.
Yeah, Vernon. It, it looks really, really good. I mean, it would, nothing against our website, but it definitely will bring it up to date, and I think it's going to be really great for the town, and.
Gary will be very happy.
There you go. That's why, as long as Gary's happy.
It's whoever's putting it together, yeah. Honestly, isn't me, that's all. All right, we have a discussion. Fair enough. All vote. All who was in favor of the motion, or the motion was about the municipality or?
Town website.
Town website through web town.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All who opposed, same sign. That's why I have to get a little, little area.
And the last thing I have, the Vermont Fire Extinguisher person was here checking all the fire extinguishers, and he recommended that the fire truck should have a 10 or 20 pound ABC fire extinguisher on it.
Fire truck, fire extingu.
You're not there during the day.
I'm sorry.
I didn't say anything bad, I just, relighting information.
Can you say that again, Carrie, please? A 10 or 20 pound ABC fire extinguisher on the fire truck. Thank you.
We got one in furniture.
What is the dry cam? That's, that's ABC? Yeah. That's, that's got to be a 10 pound. Those are like 4 pound, I think.
Doesn't, doesn't mean it was, it could have not been on.
Yeah, it could be. Yeah, it could be. It's, it's a good recommendation.
And that is all I have. School board.
School board.
Didn't write that on my little note. So I heard back, what? So I reached out to Angelina again, and she talked with Ms. Nysley, who's superintendent, and she said that used to be the way it worked, that the, that the select board would do it, but with Act 46 laws, that was snuck into Act 46 laws, and now it is the school board's responsibility.
I do not feel comfortable with the superintendent making that decision without coming to this meeting and talking to us, or sharing chapter and verse, especially considering what she did as part of the whole Act 46 for our school district, so I'll be adamant about that.
Right on.
I, I still, I feel like that is a, still a violation of the rights of the town of Groddon. We, it is an elected official from the town, and therefore the select board should have the sole responsibility for ensuring that those positions are continually filled when there's not an election. So I will follow up on that.
And that also goes against, that also goes against the sovereignty of the town.
Correct. I, I.
I know. We don't want to shoot the messenger, but.
Another thing, Carrie. Carrie. You tell them.
Apparently they have to study their state constitution very well, so anyways, that's another chapter.
So I can send you the, the statute that she quoted.
Yes, please. That would be fantastic.
I can imagine what the statute says.
And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some follow up.
So do we have any possible candidates?
I've reached out to a few people, but no one has nibbled on it yet.
Maybe, maybe Emily would like to be a part of the, oh, wait, I'm sorry, she doesn't live here anymore.
No. I also have, forgot, two letters to the select board that got dropped into the mic drop, okay? I think they're all good.
There's no white power.
I'm going to say, I'm going to look for resin or something.
It said the Groddon Methodist Church, so I don't.
Careful with the knives, boys.
I forgot. Oh, don't worry, I was vaccinated for anthrax.
I was vaccinated for the X, except for anthrax, because he wasn't around.
Oh, is it the same thing?
Nope. Ours was a town clock rental increase. I don't know, I think if we find another place to put that town clock, they're going to raise the rent on us every 65 years.
Yeah, especially with that amount.
I think it'd be just cheaper to put up a clock tower and pay those.
Inflation, inflation.
He got it all, like, I'm out front, we can do it tomorrow.
So, that one is a request for $2,400 to support the.
Lunches with friends?
Lunches with friends.
This is a 2020 appropriation.
Yep.
2022, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And that's the same amount as it was.
As was last year.
Do I have to stay, kind of have the select board hold or not, keeping with the budget?
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a request.
Yep. I think based on the current status, we should, we should budget, but we can't. Do we want to vote to accept them, or?
No, I mean, I think we'll just, they're both budget items that will.
Perfect, very.
Now I believe I'm done.
All right, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
All right, Dorothy, Assistant Assessor.
I got ahold, I sent an email to Franco, who's the owner of Cartographics, who does our tax maps, to ask about a couple of things that we were thinking about for the new budget. And he got back to me and said that with the new software that the state of Vermont's doing, that Cartographics is going to have to rewrite software for all of the towns, and it's going to cost each town, he's not sure yet, but he thinks it's going to cost each town $1,800. So I forwarded that information to the folks at BPR, they're questioning it, but at this point, I've added it to my budget. He doesn't know when they'll be doing the rewrite. He thinks it'll be 20, he just doesn't know. And it, and 1,800 is kind of the ballpark, but it may be more, depending on each town. So I've added that to my budget. And I've given my budget to Lisa. I'm not going to be at the, at the budget meeting, but she's got my budget. And then the other thing is that I gave you a copy of a webinar. Monday, I'm going to have a webinar on the new software, the Vermont Property Information Exchange. And this was, I gave you a copy of, that explains what the Vermont PI is. It's the new web, web-based data. So some of the changes will start in January. So this was kind of a general update of the program, so I gave it to you just so you have an idea of what, what it is and, and some of the changes. And I've got a copy that I'll give to Gary also, but I'll be doing a webinar on it on Monday. And then some of the changes start in January, when we're going to be validating our, our local sales for this, valid, the sales validation part of, that we do every year, so. Anyway, that's just kind of an update on what's going on. And I was, I went back and forth with them a couple times about the 1,800, and yes, it's going to happen, and yes, it's a one-time cost. So.
Advanced, advanced technology, that's what we pay for, so. Got to have it.
I think that's all that I have for tonight.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Fire and pass. Anything on the pass side?
Did have one member, Hartway completed his training.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was, done his EMR training, and now he needs to take two tests, and he passed his first test, and now he needs to take his computer test, so.
He's done his partner a lot, right?
Yep.
So he's got to do that.
So.
And we could be possibly having another one coming onboard.
Yep.
Another possible member. We have to vote on it by next month. Somebody interested with EMS, so we like seeing that, people interested in that. In fact, it's the, it's his wife, Rio's wife. So it's all right. I told, we, we have an air pack that fits her, but she didn't take on that one, so. Guess so much for that. But anyways, it's all right. Fireside, trying to get the, been working on the capital plan, the budget, trying to get that sorted out, and finally got, I think I got a handle on it, so at least I can understand it, so. And also doing up the, getting the budget ready for, presented both the capital plan as we're progressing, and the fire department budget. And so far, everything's so good, unless, you know, somebody asks questions or concerns, so I'll be passing, making copies and giving that to the board members here another week, so, before the budget meeting, so.
Where are we on the tires for, uh, one?
Keeping what we got on there.
In the future, I'd like to make a suggestion, since it is taxpayer, the money that pays for the tires, maybe rotten tire, naut, or tin screener, do you have a question, do you have a quote?
They did. Yeah, we always.
Yeah, we got, we got about three, we, we shot up about, I think, four different quotes. We got three, one didn't, didn't respond, but, but we did get another one after the fact, we got another one, so that's, that's five, so. But, yeah, we, we went around with that, so.
We also sometimes gain it on to the state bit, and then auto is moving, so that's the doubts.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we try to, so make sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate the interest, Dan. Yeah, did the Zoom meeting, I mentioned that last week, with capital, I guess it was with publics, the public safety, with Capital Mutual Aid on communications issues. They, they will visit a town near you, and so they, once they get there, I'll think next, this next, this month, they're supposed to meet, they're supposed to meet, and they're supposed to get two representatives from the Capital Mutual Aid, the fire group, to go on to that public service committee. I think they're going to have a total, I think, three to 10 on there, I think. And they're supposed to come up with a plan, and they're supposed to, in a short and long version, they're going to, supposedly going to be hitting these towns that are members of the Capital Mutual Aid, the select boards, and trying to go over the cost and what it's going, you know, what, what's going to be associated with it. When they get a, when they have a projection, stack, projection of $3.6 million to start out with, it could go up to $6.4 million. And when you start dividing that up, I don't know, I think they have what, 20 something fire departments, or 20, was it, 26, I got fire departments, and you're trying to divide up $6 million between, not many, doesn't compute, and we don't really see any benefit from it, so. It's going to be, it's going to be interesting. There's a lot of chatter, they've been going through this for the last three years, it's just been discussion, but nothing. And now all of a sudden, so I don't know. We'll see what happens. Find out the next meeting, so. Other than that, I, as far as I got on that, so. First obstacle, UFO policy and training to be adopted. Have you gentlemen looked at the policy?
Yep.
Any questions?
It's in the back, there we go. I think, I think we need a motion, right?
Uh, let me kind of, yeah, we need a motion, we can discuss it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to adopt the use of force policy and training as recommended.
Second. Okay, now the discussion. Jeff, what do you think?
Hi, everyone. To be truthful, I haven't even looked at it, because I have the training yearly. This year, I'm having trouble, I may not be able to get it, apply it. So I may end up having to apply it all the way down. The guy who I usually get it up to St. J, the events are busy, but he hasn't had time to get his training renewed. I've been, well, I've tried to be in contact with the academy, I don't get any callbacks. I don't know how many times I've called them. I've tried calling Orange County to see if they were offering it. Same deal, no callbacks.
Is that the issue of force continuum? Is that the force continuum?
I believe so.
Well, they, they updated it, because they, they had to update it. Basically, the information's overwhelming, because I don't see how, honestly, I don't see how police officers can remember every detail. When you've got about, when you've got a split-second decision to make and say, oh, I gotta go bang, look at chapter, this, verse, you know, I'm thinking.
It was regular draw, not by some idiot that's got a college education, and it says in the book, it's going to work, and he never tried it.
Well, I mean, some, I mean, I, I really.
The force continuum has changed so drastically.
Oh, I know.
From 2001 till today, going from soft can to non-lethal to lethal. And it's to the point now where you're almost afraid to use the force, no matter what the situation. And the worst colleague I ever got, is that we have a disaster.
Well, I think it all stems from the, what is it, George Floyd, that whole incident?
No, it was changing before that.
Your partner?
Oh, yeah.
I think, well, I, well, as I've looked at it, I think if anything escalated, because that thing was just.
Well, it started out where, instead of going through the force continuum to go, they wanted you to try verbal intervention. So someone, when someone's swinging on you, you're supposed to ask them what's their reason. Well.
That's a little bit late for that.
It doesn't work there.
So I kind of, so anyways, it's kind of why them things is kind of handed down from the state, and that's all.
Anyways, I don't know how it's going to fare now. Still trying. I'll take it all in the gym this morning, probably will again, get it tomorrow, I might be.
We shouldn't be making the effort, Jeff.
Oh, you do. All you need to do is take it to a safe place, and then go and go and draw. Right.
Try now? Okay.
When was the last time we had an incident where you had to escalate the use of force?
None of that, no.
Okay. And how many years have you taken the training?
I've been doing it for almost 20 years, so.
Okay.
I don't remember just when it started being.
It's pleasant, yeah.
This is where you're, and if I get something, if I have a bomb, give them that, draw and I'll go.
I got it working.
Yep.
All right, your motion's on it. Uh, all, all those in favor of the, uh, policy, uh, use of force, policy and training to be adopted, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign? Library, anything from the library? I received the, uh, I think the, the budget.
Yep.
Yeah, he, um, dropped off a copy, so I'll put it in this budget folder, unless you want, want them.
I think Deborah sent it.
Was Deborah here?
Yeah.
Oh. All right, missed her.
Her comment was, we've got this many people, maybe we should.
Yep. That was Zach's comment.
She said, but I've got to like, maybe.
Okay, yeah, we need to talk to him.
Was Junior here for the library?
Yeah, I think he was, yeah. Okay. Door Administrator?
I condemned the building today. Had a furnace hole that separated by approximately three and a half feet, which I had never seen before. It spilled approximately 96 gallons of raw sewage into the ground underneath the building. That houses children under the age of 18. The renters had made no complaints to me or to any other health official or to any administrator until after they were told that they needed to move. So the building will be condemned. I have the signs, we'll replace it here tomorrow. And then we'll be out of there.
Anything else in?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, health officer. Uh, do there some, uh, things that could be possible as, along the way, as I've been appointed as the town health officer? Uh, there's a lot of things I've been observing that could be possible. Possibility of possible in the near future of being conflict of interest because being a board member. Uh, I kind of reached it up, uh, reached out to Dan, uh, to, uh, to appoint him as assistant, uh, town health officer. So it kind of prevent that, uh, conflict of interest, uh, as the board. So we do have somebody that's, uh, can be officiating. So, uh, if the rest of the board will, will, accept the approval, we have Dan upstairs as the assistant.
Dan, you gotta know, that's on the up and up. That's not something that's got to come down from the state. That's something that the board can. Yeah.
Maybe I was, I was going to say, maybe I was never put on, but that's why. Because the commissioner, the doctor, the, I mean, was it Mark Boon, had, had sent me this, uh, yeah, personal things and, yeah, tag you in.
Quick to add people, slow to take people off.
It's like cooking chicken pies, the chicken pie stuff.
So, all right, so the board approves the appointment, so we're set to go, Dan.
You can give him your badge.
I'll give him my badge.
You write assistant on top of it.
Okay. Maintenance, anything on the maintenance? I see that front yard's been tore up.
Go back together.
Is it, is it all packed back?
I, I think it's good now.
I see, I see the dirt pile out here is gone, so I see it must be transferred over there, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to make sure it's all helping. I said, some's getting done.
I think it's starting next week. He talked about doing the parking lot, so I think you're going to have to figure out your fire trucks. It's going to have to be pulled out across the rip-up line.
Mm-hmm.
I was talking with him, he said, no matter, I looked here. He may not do it because it's a couple of different pieces.
The pipes, yeah, elbows, okay.
So they've been all over, and like, in order to, but they just can't give them.
I, the way I understood it, uh, that he, he's, uh, he didn't want it attempted until next spring anyways because the, in order to patch up the, uh, parking lot, the batching plants are going to be closing down. If they haven't shut down already, they could probably, have they shut down already here or are they in the process? It must be pretty close.
Still favoring the.
I think so. Well, the plant is still open.
No, I was just saying, they're usually about first November they shut down.
Robert said the 15th, but.
What's that?
Robert Ferguson said the 15th.
15th.
But it's still to consider that. That's not right many days.
No, it isn't.
Depends on, depends on how many jobs Pike still has out.
Yeah, they got.
I heard the other night that David Ollie got to finish what he had on the books.
Oh, so they're not going to keep the batch running, the plant running then?
So I have a thought process on, on catching the pool up. And that is, we, we put that across now. When the drainage comes in, we're going to be digging under that, under that line. Going to be crossing that at some point. So it would be, it sounds to me like digging, I'm just dumb at it. It may be beneficial to wait till whatever happens to the drainage to actually get, you know, dig across that gap. It would all one shop deal.
Yeah.
You know, and it's late season, maybe.
Yep. So I would probably be updating Robert's bid, his contract and everything.
Yeah, yeah. It's getting late in the season anyway, so, and a good point because instead of doing it twice, we do it all at once.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's.
As a former plumber, I think we should cut it out and have some.
That's right, yep.
And the person that's going to fix the opponent that plows it?
There we go. We can, we can go on this rest of the night.
So is that what you want me to do, is to update the contract and let Robert know?
Let Robert know.
Stop looking because it would probably be whoever gets the bid for the whole thing, you know?
Yeah, is he, is he already, I mean, I'm assuming he's already bought most of the parts he needs to.
I think he has bought the main pipe. It was the elbows he was looking for, I think he said to me.
Some kind of, some special elbows.
So, I don't know.
Well, I think he's still going to do his thing and then the drainage, whoever that is just.
I'm wondering if we just, we just delay until the spring at least. And once we get the drainage project sorted out and see what we're going to do with that next summer, he could do it at the same time. And I mean, I think, I don't know that we need to update the contract with him other than to say.
The timeline and not being charged $100 and.
Yeah, exactly. Let's update the timeline and say we're going to push it out till next summer. And that way he doesn't have to, he can keep the parts he's got because he's going to use them and not, and know that we're going to pay for that, but not going to have to have the pressure getting that done and stuff.
Might have to, um, it would be very nice to not pay him something for what he's already done.
I don't see, I mean, I think at this point, yeah, you pay him for the project.
Yeah, I was paying for what, what he's done.
What he's done, yeah. That seems, that seems fair. No sense in holding that over his head for another 16 months.
No, no, I don't know.
Well, we wouldn't have to worry about working with him again.
I'll work on that.
Is he?
We'll see him tomorrow.
But he said he wasn't really interested in the, in the suit, in the.
No, he said it was a little too big for a one-man crew.
A one-man crew, yeah.
Me and Fred here a little bit. Son here for a minute, but.
Yep, yep. Gotcha, okay.
So, so we will, uh, go that route then. Anything else on maintenance?
Do you hear anything back on the ramp?
Oh, um, I did talk to, um, Janice Page and she's getting another quote tomorrow.
Gotcha.
I told her for budget and.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, we can look at it for next year. Sounds like a plan.
The water filtration thing, is that all set?
Yeah, I picked, I told you the dates last meeting and I've told them that that was worked, so we're all set up.
And I, I did see that they've been working on the ball fields.
Oh, have they?
Frost field looks great.
Oh, yeah?
I didn't see frost field. I knew that they'd, but I didn't go back.
He was waiting on the material. I think he got it all dug up and all nice.
Yeah, it looks good. I, I don't remember looking at it.
10 times, yeah.
Oh, excited to see it.
It's all nice and cut and he's going to put more stuff in.
Yeah.
I actually see things like that.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Make people eat that way.
You gotta get a sticker for the front of your truck. Something.
There's going to be a sticker. I'm going to, yesterday or whatever it was, I didn't see it. Coming through the bridge down there and I thought like. Not a working on the neighbors. You go by staring at me that way.
Yeah. Alyssa said something too. It's so, uh, she's, well, somebody's working at the neighbor's house. She's got a, it's got a silver truck. She said, who do you, is that Beau? I said, no, it's not Beau. I said, I don't know who the heck it is. And I'm like, oh, it's Harold. I know who that is.
Oh, boy. How old are you now? Okay, we won't go there. Uh, anyways, all right, so maintenance covered.
Any word on the outlet?
I emailed them last meeting. I haven't replied.
Okay. IT, anything from Gary?
Gary will be very happy about the new web, town website thing.
Good.
Awesome.
And I think Dorothy's printers are back ordered. He's looking somewhere else. It's the whole, you know, six months till you can get one. So he's trying to find it somewhere else. He said to me the other day.
It was a, was it Dorothy you were saying something about keyboard issue?
Yes, I, I've got to get it. I've got it, the R, I've got to get it over there. It's terrible. The R sticks. So you have to use more R. I think something that melts into it because it's that area around the R and, but it's great as long as you have a word with an R.
Good thing reappraisals are over with.
That's one of the fire stations.
Oh, okay.
You get 40 Rs.
Did you ask Gary if he had an extra keyboard?
He did, and he said that it's in the drawer and I'm going to put it on. I just haven't done it yet. But today it was, I was over there for a webinar and it's like.
Didn't work.
It's not good.
Oh, boy. Uh, I just saw you, you sent the email. I said, I just wondered if it got fixed. All right, thank you, Dorothy.
Oh, I, well, I don't know if we need one, but I got a, uh, I got a projector, an extra projector if you guys want it.
Projector.
Like a computer screen projector.
LCD?
No, not an LCD screen, but an actual like projector, projector, projector. I got it in the car. I'll bring it in. I forgot.
Yeah, make a donation.
Donate it to.
Is that, was Zoom thing developed on a screen or?
No, no, it's like it would project the screen of the computer on a. White plane or something, yeah.
Does the library need it? Because they always borrow ours.
Oh, yeah, I can ask them.
She asked Jody because she was always borrowing when they had a lot of activities.
Yeah, I'll give it to her.
Make sure you take off.
I'll drop it over tomorrow.
Make sure you take off the property that Dorothy picked up.
That's right, yeah. I already made sure it was on there. No, I found, I went into our waste management center and there's the whole box of like multiple old projectors people throwing away. They're all good. They can plug into a computer and go, so. Might as well, if it works. Give it to a good home.
All right. Plan and commission. Anybody here on the plan?
We're in the middle of another subdivision project.
All right.
Well, the wall bridge is here. Oh, shoot.
All right, anything on NEK, CUD?
I haven't heard anything from Mike.
Make that slow down.
All right, open to the public and not the business.
Do you have anything to name or have?
I don't have anything. Anybody got anything on that?
Please, if you didn't already, have a piece of cake. Have a piece of cake.
My husband loves cake.
There you go. The less I take home, the better.
Got the four kids. It's five days off of Halloween. I don't need any more sweets.
You don't know whether you got trucked or treated. All right, well, we'll close that up on that. All right, so that's agenda for next sub-week.
I suppose we should, uh, make sure that the community club is on the agenda so we don't have any other concerns. I would definitely say that we need to make sure that that's there.
Well, I did.
They're supposed to call me, Brianna, and then.
Okay, the, uh, insurance issue.
Yep.
Executive section, we actually want that stamped at six, so we can make sure that it's on.
Yeah, I think so. That way we're getting done a decent time.
Six o'clock, make sure that's on, I think, at six o'clock. And all the rest of the items that are on there.
Is that, you want the school board member on there again?
Yep, we should keep that on there.
I think that's the daily open bids for, um, cleaning, isn't it?
Cleaning and.
Yep.
And probably want to just update, just to have a, uh, budget discussion, just kind of a preliminary before. That's the meeting before that went on Saturday, so.
No, it's after.
It's a, it's after, it's the 13th.
That's just coming Saturday, the budget meeting.
The budget's this coming Saturday?
No, it's open today.
That's right, yeah, yeah. I'm just, all's been done by two. I'll probably end up forgetting my vacation, so.
You'll be.
No, you won't because my service.
I guess I'm not either.
It'll start late. Zach, you ought to be tagged out by then.
I'd run out of the woods by then.
Oh, this is up CJ, so she's not going very far. She ain't going down there. I told her. Didn't get a good response back.
I'm about driving home.
Nah, yeah. I'll take care of it. I'll take care of it.
All right, I, uh, anything else I think that.
Anything else on open the public, anything on this? Oh, that's right, we already did that.
Agenda?
Agenda. Okay, I don't think so. I don't see anything else. If there is, people call.
How about the council policy?
We already passed it.
Okay, that's right.
All right, signing the orders.
Yep. Heard just about that one.
Yeah, too many signatures. Didn't spend any money.
Lou, do a juror.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay.